Amen. Pray for God. Dear Holy Father, Lord of all, may God bless us all. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May He bless us all. May His mercy be with us. 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 May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May His mercy be with us. May His mercy be with us. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. Dear Holy Father, Lord of all, may we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May His mercy be with us. May His mercy be with us. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. In this prayer, we pray for the salvation of our children. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. Dear Holy Father, Lord of all, may we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. May we be blessed and may we serve God. My brothers and sisters, with the help of prayer, we pray for God. May we be blessed and may we serve God.
Praise the Lord, brothers and sisters. We pray for God. Let's start with the first song. "Ananda Muga Eho Wani Krupala Nne" by Paul Paul. Sing and praise the Lord. And worship him.
Ananda Muga Eho Wani Krupala Nne Anni Kalambula I pinch it Ananda Muga Eho Wani Krupala Nne Anni Kalambula I pinch it Chavu Go Diva Datta Chavu Go Divu Devane De Ratu Diva Mi China Diva Datta Divarintore Nidu Veshvajata Nentayo Savyambuka Ibu Niyanda Divarintore Nidu Veshvajata Nentayo Savyambuka Ibu Niyanda Ananda Muga Eho Wani Krupala Nne Anni Kalambula I pinch it Enno Shodhana Vagalu Rege Tanno Krungada Diya Poradina Enno Shodhana Vagalu Rege Tanno Krungada Diya Poradina Vanamaina Neeshvajata Na Kuchupina Anata Ti Ninnu Koni Aaraja Galamaina Neeshvajata Na Kuchupina Anata Ti Ninnu Koni Aaraja Ananda Muga Eho Wani Krupala Nne Anni Kalambula I pinch it Parvatambulu Paripoyinalu Urvilomadhu Kaliginalu Parvatambulu Paripoyinalu Urvilomadhu Kaliginalu Arunamulu Viroda Muga Payle China I pinch it Neeshvajata Na Arunamulu Viroda Muga Payle China Swariincha Neeshvajata Na Ananda Muga Eho Wani Krupala Nne Anni Kalambula I pinch it
Amen. Praise God. Let's start with the first song. "Hallelujah, Jesus Christ." One, two, four and five songs.
Hallelujah, Jesus Christ All are blessed Allah has created us He has blessed us Allah has made me Allah has blessed me All are blessed He has blessed us Raja is Raja, Jesus Puja is Puja Hallelujah, Hallelujah God is blessed Allah is blessed God is blessed Allah is blessed He has blessed us Allah is blessed He has blessed us Allah is blessed He has blessed us Raja is Raja, Jesus Puja is Puja Hallelujah, Hallelujah God is blessed You are a pillar God is blessed Life is blessed God is blessed Grounds are paved God is blessed Ashes are shone He has blessed us Raja is Raja, Jesus Puja is Puja Hallelujah, Hallelujah God is blessed Galamaina Jalamu La God is blessed Alalavale Sevakulu He has blessed us Uthala Ra Purva Bhattula Ra God is blessed Paramandu Parishuddalu All are blessed Raja is Raja, Jesus Puja is Puja Hallelujah, Hallelujah God is blessed Raja is Raja, Jesus Puja is Puja Hallelujah, Hallelujah God is blessed
Praise God Almighty. Next song. "Let's all rise up on our feet." While we stand, please occupy the seats that are empty in front of you. It will not be disruptive to let them move to the front. So please move forward everyone. Song number 11 and the part of the postcom. "Master speak thy servant here."
Master speak thy servant here Waiting for thy gracious word Longing for thy voice that's pure Master let it now be heard I am listening Lord for thee What hast thou to say to me? Speak to me my name oh master Let me know it is to me Speak and I may follow master With a step more firm and free Where the shepherd leads the flock In the shadow of the rock Master speak o' east and o' west Let me not unheard deep far Master speak for o' down o' west All the yearning of my heart Know as all is true and sweet Speak and make me bless in thee Master speak and make me ready When thy voice is truly heard With obedience and setting Still to follow every word I am listening Lord for thee Master speak or speak to me I am listening Lord for thee Master speak or speak to me Master speak or speak to me
Amen. Please be seated. Uncle will share the worship exhortation.
Shall we pray? Our loving heavenly Father, our gracious and wonder-working God, thank thee for giving us one more day to live on this earth so that with grateful hearts we may live for thee and continue to show forth thy glory, thy power and thy love through our lives. We thank thee for the burden that was put in the hearts of the saints here in Dan prayer house. O God, watch over them all, bind them by their love, by their power so that they may always be striving together for the glory of thy name according to Philippians 1:27. Thank thee for this worship service the day of thine, O God, as you have come to worship in spirit and in truth, stir up our hearts through meditation of thy word so that we may pour out our souls with worshipful hearts in spirit and in truth. Thank thee for all those who are praying for us all over the world, answer all our prayers beyond our asking or even thinking. Onward, the servant as I am, hide me behind thy cross and use me as you must in thy sight. We bind the powers of darkness with thy mighty name and we bring our souls under thy sprinkling of blood and pray with thanksgiving in the precious and sweet name of our Lord and our Savior Jesus Christ. Amen. Shall return to Ephesians, chapter 2, verse 1. Now we are going to worship the Lord after meditation. So may God help us to be in the spirit of worship with all gratefulness. Ephesians, chapter 2, verse 1. And you have he quickened who are dead in trespasses and sins. May our Lord bless this world and he himself may stir up our hearts to worship him in spirit and in truth. This is the letter written by Apostle Paul with great burden for the Ephesian Church. Ephesians and also this letter was read all over wherever Paul had been ministering. And all the six chapters are of much value. He talks about the beauty and the splendor and the glory of the church. In the first chapter he deals with the creation and the constitution of the church. In the second chapter he deals with the construction and character of the church. And the third chapter he talks about the mystery of the church. In the fourth chapter he talks about the calling of the church. And in the fifth chapter he talks about the conduct of the church. And in the sixth chapter he talks about the conflict and the ultimate victory of the church. So that is why this letter to Ephesians is of paramount importance. That is why whenever you read any letter of Apostle Paul, you should read all the chapters, whether they are six chapters or four chapters or three chapters or five chapters, you should read the whole chap, all the letter in one go. It is only then you will understand what is that golden thread that passes through the whole letter, what is the burden of Apostle Paul. When you receive a letter from one of your dear ones, maybe eight page a letter, what will you do? Will you read it on eight days? One page today and then keep, fold it and keep it in the almarah? Next time, you know, second page, third, third page? You don't do it like that. It depends upon who wrote that letter. He will go to your room, bolt it in front, you know, inside and then with much interest, with much enthusiasm and zeal to read that letter. How many times? It depends upon the person who wrote. Number of times he will write. Even after keeping in the almarah, again he will take it and read. So that is the enthusiasm, that is the zeal, that is the passion and urge with which you should read all the Bible, the whole Bible whenever you read. Generally, you will get something, some glimpses of the glory of God which is required for our edification, for our sustaining faith. We are born again, that is the easiest thing. What happened? We are convicted. Then you confessed and you have forgiven your sins and there began Christian life. Then, to maintain that Christian life is the toughest thing because we face a thousand perils a day in the midst of all those tests and temptations to come over. God shall, without him doing, Gospel chapter 15, verse 5. Without him he can do nothing. That means nothing we can do without him. That is why we invite him in our hearts, he is dwelling in our hearts as, as long as he controls and contains us, rules us, then we are in the fold of God. Then that is how we continue to walk in the ways of the Lord. So Ephesians letter is a very, very...
There is a saying, in the heart there are two things. One is, "I have to clean me my teeth and my mouth well." "Okay, you are able to hear my voice." There are two things in our everyone's heart. A throne and a throne by hand. If you are on the throne, then Lord is on the cross. If you are on the cross, then Lord is on the throne. That is why house testimony is Galatians 2:50, wonderful testimony. "I am crucified with Christ, never shall I live yet not I. Christ lived in me, who loved me and gave his child for me. I am crucified with Christ." So that is the Christian experience. That means I am on the cross. I am crucified with him and I buried, I got buried in him. Romans 17, 18, all these. And then we are risen with him. That is how we have become a new creation. So whenever we come to the presence of the Lord, at least there are three reasons why we worship him. Firstly, we worship him for what he is. Secondly, we worship him for what he has done in our life. And thirdly, we worship him for what he has to do in our life. If these three things you see, you see worship will automatically come out of the heart. What he is for us is the creator of the whole universe. For the universe he created. And also, what is the purpose of our creation? Isaiah 43. Isaiah 43, verse 7. "Even everyone that is called by my name for I have created him for my glory. I have formed him, eh, I have made him." So Lord is our creator. Ephesians, chapter 2, the portion, the chapters that we have read. There is another expression in Ecclesiastes. Ephesians, chapter 2, verse 10. "For we are his workmanship created in Christ Jesus unto good works which God hath before our days that we should walk in them. We are his workmanship created in Christ." So not only he created Haman from the earth, he created Adam and Eve also. How, how were they created? He is our creator in his likeness and in his image. That is the beginning of human life. But you know, through a lack of faith and disobedience of one man, the sin entered the world. He is able to keep you from falling. He sustains us His victims of all crimes and tribulations, under stress and strain, He delivers them from evil situation and one day He will present us faultless than what I wanted to bring to you. He presents us faultless before the presence of His glory with exceeding joy. He presents us faultless not because of us, it is His initiative. When Adam said, "Adam did not take initiative to go to the Lord and thank Lord for eating." God took the first step. God took the initiative and coming to the man and saying, "Adam, where are you?" See, then what happens every time? He keeps us from falling and present, present us one day with no glory. Now, he is the creator of God and he is the covenant God, covenant-keeping God and he is the possessor of covenant God, the almighty God, everlasting Father. Like this, there are wonderful expressions concerning what he is. To the extent we know him, to the extent we draw, we are drawn closer and closer unto him, then he will have a very clear, sure understanding of the Lord Jesus Christ. Then comes the true worship for our, our, for our. We worship him for what he is. And now, secondly, we worship him for what he has done. He is not only the creator of the whole universe, but he is the savior of the world. Where do you find that? In John's Gospel, chapter 4, verse 42. He is the savior of the world, they explain. Not only our individual savior.
But he is savior for the whole world. That is why John's Gospel, chapter 3, verse 16, we have that glorious verse. "God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son that whosoever believeth in him should not perish but have everlasting life." In Punjab, once we went for open air, the Punjabis and you know all, a lot of people, multiverse language people are also there. And we were shouting the verses. At one point, one Punjabi brother was shouting in Hindi. I know he said like this. Parmeshwanee Jagatse.
We have a meeting, Gospel meeting. So he gave his testimony that he mentioned. Through these verses, he came to the Lord Jesus Christ, John's Gospel, three sixteen. And he was fascinated and he became overwhelmed to read these verses again and again. So that is why after he got married to a believer and then blessed with a son. Hey, Rana, hey Babu. Sarikutcho, baakutcho, sarikutcho? Ah, to put. Game expression same Jaienu, vinu, manchidi. You know, that is interesting. It is very interesting, listen to me, okay? So when he was blessed with a son, that Ismail named his son as John three sixteen. What is the name? John three sixteen. Anybody would say John, they understand, what is the three sixteen, they don't understand. He told me, he told us in the, you know, testimony. He wanted that his son should be a testimony wherever he lives. Everywhere they will ask, what is your name? They will say John three sixteen. He took him to the principal, to the interview for the admission in the school. That principal asked him, my son, what is your name? Then that fellow said, John three sixteen, madam. Adalhiheesindha. Ah, Ruhul, the president said, what? John, I understand, what is three sixteen? Then he would narrate that verse. This is the verse, madam. And when he goes to the hospital for any, you know, medical prescription and all that, before prescribing, doctor asks my name, nah, what is your son's name? He will say John three sixteen. Oh, he will stop writing. He will say, what is this? John three sixteen. So then he would narrate that verse. He wanted his son should be a testimony. Ruhul, the president said, what? John, I understand, what is three sixteen? Then he would narrate that verse. This is the verse, madam. And when he goes to the hospital for any, you know, medical prescription and all that, before prescribing, doctor asks my name, nah, what is your son's name? He will say John three sixteen. He will stop writing. And I took a, what is this? John three sixteen. So then he would narrate that verse. He wanted his son for me. Ruhul, the president said, what? John, I understand, what is three sixteen? Then he would narrate that verse. This is the verse, madam. And when he goes to the hospital, you know, medical prescription and all that, before prescribing, doctor asks my name, nah, what is your son's name? He will say John three sixteen. He will stop writing. And I took a, what is this? John three sixteen. Whenever you go to Singapore, go to the electronic market, you will find that. John three sixteen, what a testimony. So through these verses, thousands and thousands of people were saved all over the world. Because there it talks about the greatness of God's love. We cannot explain that love. Human words would become inadequate to expound and expound the love of God. What we are now seeing is, we worship him for what he has done unto us. What he has done, he has loved us there, everlasting love. See here in the same verse, Ephesians chapter two, verse four. Ephesians, chapter four, chapter two, verse four. Mahaprema, great love with which he has loved us. How can we explain that love for this earthly man? Insignificant. You know, when you go on the air, thirty-seven, thirty-six thousand feet it goes. When you see, nothing is seen. When it is coming down and down, then you will see. Manu chiamalakanta takku gammatram. You know, cars like a tall, tight cars. When he is sitting in the heavens of heavens, what are we in his presence? What are we in his sight? Totally insignificant. We can't be even seen. Such in, you know, insignificant people. For us, he came down from heaven, leaving all glory and splendor to be here and to give himself on the cross so that he could shed his precious blood and with that blood we could be redeemed and delivered from the power of darkness and translated us into the kingdom of the dear son, Lord Jesus Christ, according to Colossians one thirteen. So that is the love with which Lord has loved us. We cannot assess, we cannot explain. Human words would become inadequate to expound and explain the love of the Lord. There is one song we often sing in India, I think you may be knowing. Aapandi. Na yulla mandu, yesu vachenu. What is the next line? Na jeevita rajayenu. Aynada? Think about it. Many times we use words loosely without understanding the significance of what we are singing. Na yulla mandu, yesu vachenu na jeevita raja. Have you ever made him king over you? What does it mean? That means you are under his government, under his rule, under his advice and counsel. Is it so? No. We have to confess. We take our own decisions. We take our own decisions concerning human situations. But at the time of the marriages. At the time of the marriages, the real color of the family is seen. You know, they, under human consideration, they do so many things. Purchase, bargain, all those things will take place. And then they will put a word, you know, on the top of the wedding card. What is that? Invariable, I have seen, Genesis twenty-four, verse fifty. Even if this thing proceeded from the Lord. So we have to be very, very clear in our Christian life as we pass through. We have to be controlled by him. What wonderful things Lord has done unto us. Here we see Ephesians, chapter two, verse five. "Even when we were dead in sins, hath weakened us, together with Christ. By grace ye are saved," verse eight. "For by grace ye are saved through faith, and that not of yourselves, but it is the gift of God." It is not because of anything that you have. You may think that you are very pious and God fearing. It is not because of any qualities that you may have. It is merely the gift of God. By grace we are saved through faith. That means grace on his part and faith on our part. When the grace and faith came together, there came great salvation, complete salvation, eternal salvation. That we find in Hebrews, chapter two, verse three, Hebrews, chapter five, verse nine, Hebrews, chapter seven, verse twenty-five. Great salvation, complete salvation, eternal salvation. There is a song very often we sing in Hindi in Delhi, but I will sing chorus in Telugu. It is a great salvation, wonderful, complete, eternal salvation. If those who do not have this salvation, even now you can confess your sins. It is all that you have to do is confess your sins and accept him as your personal Lord and Savior. Then you will also have the joy of worshiping him, adoring him, magnifying him in the house of the living God. So we need to have that understanding of the Lord. When we have understood him, many of us have accepted him. He has come in our heart and he is controlling our lives. So that is what he has done. So secondly, we worship him for what he has done in our lives. When we are heading towards hell, now he has turned us, aboveturned, and we are heading towards heaven. On our way to heaven, there are trials and tribulations. How we have to enter into the kingdom? See Acts of Apostles, Acts of Apostles, chapter fourteen. Apostles encourages believers there. Acts, chapter four, Acts, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-two says, "Confirming the souls of the disciples and exhorting them to continue in the faith, and that we must through much tribulation enter into the kingdom of God." With much tribulation, we must enter into the kingdom of the living God. John's Gospel, chapter sixteen. That is the way of Christian life. It is not a bread of roses, it is full of thorns. Don't be discouraged, huh? That is the life. John's Gospel, chapter sixteen, verse thirty-three. "These things I have spoken unto you, that in me you might have peace. In the world, in the world ye shall have tribulation." Lord is saying. "But be of good cheer, I have overcome the world." So as we live our life as a believer, you face many trials and tribulations, many testing times, many discomfortable situations. God never makes us comfortable. He allows many discomfortable situations, then he will come and comfort us. That is the way of Christian life. We read in John's Gospel, chapter one hundred and nineteen, verse seventy-five. We, I mentioned it yesterday also. As for him, his way is perfect. In his affliction, in his faithfulness, he afflicts us. Whenever you have fever, when you have Corona, I had Corona twice. When I had Corona, everybody thought in the world that Jaysharam is gone. Yeah, afterwards, only last year only, you know? Then everybody thought I am gone. And when they phone up, they, with a husky voice, they will ask, as King Daniel's time. Daniel, Daniel, at Blitternand. Uncle, how are you? Testing times we pass through when we look back our life, so many hurdles and barriers on our way of life. God sustained us by the mighty power of God, not because of our healthy situation, not because of we have got a very good doctor, not because of that, because it is God's plan. In the God's plan, sufferings is a part of the divine principle of training God's people. You cannot be exempted from it. Everyone under the sun have to go through this. I think already you would have gone, gone through it. Never murmur, never grumble, because it is Lord's allowance. I don't know if many, man, we in our, obviously suppose if they declare special allowance, you know, for all those who come from Dallas, ah, what a joy it would be. It is a special allowance, trials and tribulations. In the life of a believer, it is a special allowance from the Lord so that we may become more and more righteous, more and more, that we could be drawn closer and closer unto him so that we may have a very clearer, surer understanding of the Lord Jesus Christ and thus abandon ourselves into the everlasting arms of the Lord. That is what God wants. That is why he wanted to hear us, he wanted to see us, but we go away from him. Songs of Solomon, chapter two, verse fourteen. "He wanted to, 'Let me see thy countenance, let me hear thy voice,' he says." Solomon, the Songs of Solomon, chapter two, verse fourteen. See, Vajpayee, you know, have you heard him? Dekenge. Are you, can't they king, Bodo bhaiya? You know, like that all through, but he is a wonderful man. I always used to say, let anybody hear through the world, right part and a wrong party. Vajpayee. So when we read the word of God, read with the emphasis, read again. Oh, what a wonderful word. "Let me see thy countenance, let me hear thy voice." That is what Lord says. But what is our attitude? Isaiah, Book of Isaiah, forty-three, verse twenty-two. If this is your state, you cannot worship the Lord.
But you are not called upon me, O Jacob, and you have been weary of me.
Read again, my boy, good. Read again.
But you are not called upon me, O Jacob, and you have been weary of me.
See, what a sad thing. You have not called upon me, Jacob. You have become weary of me, O Israel. Hare, man, I am going to wish you, you know, ma. Have you become fed up with him? Having enjoyed the wonderful love, everlasting love, great love, matchless love, why, how come that you are not able to pray to him? So if we, if we have enjoyed that wonderful, great, complete, eternal salvation, the very next thing that you will do is, you will learn to pray to him. A newborn babe, when she comes out of the womb, what, what does she do? First thing is, she cries. They have personal experience. The baby cries. If a baby does not cry. Nurse will sprinkle water on the face. Then if there is a life in the babe, she will cry. If there is no life, it is stillborn babe. We are not stillborn babe, stillborn babe cannot pray. No, we are born with life. What sort of life? Life eternal. Then the first thing that we should have is cultivate a habit of praying, cultivate the habit of praising, cultivate the habit of worshiping him, thanksgiving him and glorify God. What did Paul do on the way to Damascus? When he was going to go and arrest all the Christians and bring back to the chief priests, God arrested him on his way to Damascus. And from then on, he never turned back and continued to serve the Lord. In very immediate after that incident, eleventh verse, there is a testimony concerning him. Even if, behold, he prayseth, behold, he prayseth, behold, he prayseth. If a spirit of God should give a testimony concerning us, what will he say? Behold, she is with the laptop. Behold, she is with this cellphone. Somebody said, if we treat the Lord Jesus Christ as we treat cellphone, you will be a blessed person. I hope you understood it. Let us treat the Lord as he is. He is the king of kings, lord of lords, and he is going to come again. Are you not interested in him? He has to receive you, don't you respect him? So first thing is, we worship him for what he is. Second thing is, what Lord has done unto us. When we were yet sinners, he died for us. When we were yet without any faith, he inculcated that faith so that we could believe on him and we may be cleansed and washed and sanctified by the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ and be his children whereby you could pour spirit of adoption and whereby we could call him Abba and father. See, there itself is there. What is the burden of the Lord? That we may call him Abba and father. But Isaiah laments concerning the lethargic attitude of children of Israel. "O Jacob, you have not been calling upon me. O Israel, you have become weary of me." What a sad thing. So let us encourage ourselves in a given situation, whatever situation Lord has kept us. If you are a saved person, you will worship him for what he is and you also will worship him for what he has done in our life already. Now thirdly, we worship him for what he has had to do. That is a great thing. John's Gospel, chapter fourteen, verse nineteen. John's Gospel, fourteen, verse nineteen. "Because I live, ye shall live also." Yeah, because I live, ye shall live also. Because he has given us hope of eternal life. John's Gospel, chapter fourteen, verse three, Solomon. Ah, he will receive us, it is not ongoing. You have to be received by him so that we may यू हैव तू रिसीव्ड बाय हिम, सो डेट वी मैं डेवल विथ हिम, इन डी प्लेस वेयर ही इस डेट इस डी ग्रेटेस्ट प्रिविलेज डेट वी हैव सो वी गॉड्स पीपल, इन गॉड्स प्लेस, अंडर गॉड्स रूल वी हैव डी ग्रेट प्रिविलेज ऑफ़ वर्षिपिंग हिम इन स्पिरिट एंड इन ट्रुथ वन डे, माय लॉर्ड, ही विल गोइंग तू कम अगेन व्हेन ही विल कम अगेन, व्हेन आई सी हिम आज ही इस, आई विल बी लाइक हिम व्हाट इस वंडरफुल वर्ड, इट इस माइंड बंगलिंग तू थिंक, हो कुड बी लाइक हिम फर्स्ट जॉन, चैप्टर 3, वर्ष 2 सॉलमन आयन पोली इन दुमंते, वी शल बी लाइक हिम डेट मींस तू से, डी इमेज डेट वी लॉस्ट इन अडम, इन डी गॉडन ऑफ़ अडन वी आर गोइंग तू रीगेन इट बाय डी पॉवर ऑफ़ रेसरेक्शन बट फॉर डेट, वी हैव तू सरनर्द अवर्सेल्स आते फीट ऑफ़ डी लॉर्ड कंटिन्यू तू लिव अन लाइफ डेट इस एक्सेप्टेबल इन डी हिम व्हाट वी लिव, व्हाट वी टॉक, व्हाट वी बेहेव शुड एवरीथिंग बी एक्सेप्टेबल इन डी लॉर्ड सो डेट व्हेन ही विल कम अगेन, वी विल बी विथ हिम फॉर एवर एंड एवर डेट इस डी होप एंड एक्सपेक्टेशन लॉर्ड हस गिवन अंटी अस थ्रू डी ब्लड ऑफ़ डी लैंप डेट इस वही, लेट अस वर्षिपिंग हिम विथ डी फ्यू थॉट्स एंड ग्लोरिफाई गॉड व्होएवर इस बॉन्ड अगेन, यू हैव डी प्रिविलेज ऑफ़ वर्षिपिंग हिम इन स्पिरिट एंड इन ट्रुथ इन फ्यू वर्ड्स, इन फ्यू वर्ड्स वर्षिपिंग हिम
थैंक यू वंस अगेन, माय लॉर्ड, रिमेंबरिंग विथ मी, योर वर्ड, माय लॉर्ड, यस, लॉर्ड आई वास अन सिंहर, एंड लॉर्ड, आई वास परिश्विंग, माय लॉर्ड विथ योर अवर्लास्टिंग लव एंड डेट ग्रेट सैक्रिफिस, माय लॉर्ड विच यू आर सेंट योर ओनली बिगोटन सन, माय लॉर्ड, तू सेव मी सो डेट आई विल नॉट परिश्विंग एंड आई विल नॉट गेट डिस्ट्रॉयड, माय लॉर्ड थैंक यू, लॉर्ड, फॉर गिव मी अन होप, डेट यू विल बी कमिंग वन डे तू टेक मी अप विथ योर अगेन, लॉर्ड तू डेवल अलाउंग विथ यू, माय लॉर्ड डेट अवर्लास्टिंग मर्सीज एंड ग्रेस आस सेव्ड मी, लॉर्ड, एंड मेड मी लाइव, माय लॉर्ड थैंक यू फॉर वंस अगेन, रिमाइंडिंग दिस, वंडरफुल वर्ड, माय लॉर्ड एंड कीप मी लाइव एंड कीपिंग डेट होप इन मी एंड डेट फैथ इन मी थैंक यू, जीसस, वंस अगेन, फॉर गिविंग दिस अपॉर्चुरिटी एंड आई ऑफर दिस लिटिन वर्ड्स ऑफ़ वर्षिपिंग इन हाईली एक्साल्टेड नेम मैचलेस नेम ऑफ़ माय लॉर्ड एंड सेवियर जीसस क्रिस्ट
अमन अमन
लॉर्ड ग्रेचस, ओनली फादर, थैंक यू, जीसस, फॉर दिस डे आई थैंक यू, जीसस, फॉर ब्रिंगिंग मी, वर्षिपिंग, तू प्रेज यू एंड तू एक्साल्ट योर नेम लॉर्ड, थैंक यू, जीसस, फॉर व्हाट यू आर एंड व्हाट यू, एंड व्हाट यू हैव डॉन फ्रॉम मी एंड व्हाट यू आर येत डू फ्रॉम मी आई थैंक यू, जीसस, लॉर्ड, यू आर डी क्रिएटर एंड लॉर्ड, आई थैंक यू, जीसस, लॉर्ड यू हैव डायर्ड फ्रॉम यू इन डी क्रॉस, लॉर्ड, एंड यू हैव रोज़ अगेन यू हैव बिन विथ मी, एंड लॉर्ड, आई थैंक यू, जीसस, फॉर व्हाट यू आर येत डू यू आर येत डू कम डाउन, कम बैक एंड वन डे टेक, टेक मी विथ यू आई थैंक यू, जीसस, फॉर ऑल डेट यू डॉन फ्रॉम मी आई ऑफर डी स्मॉल वर्षिप और प्रेज इन डी मोस्ट हाईली एक्साल्टेड नेम ऑफ़ माय लॉर्ड एंड सेवियर जीसस क्रिस्ट, अमन
लविंग, ग्रेचस, ओनली फादर, थैंक यू, लॉर्ड, फॉर दिस अपॉर्चुरिटी डेट यू गिवन मी तू कम तू योर प्रेजेंस दिस पर, दिस मॉर्निंग एंड तू बी, तू फॉरस्टेज ऑन माय फेस ऑफ़ थाइ फीट प्रेजिंग यू, ग्लोरिफाइंग यू, अडोरिंग यू फॉर व्ही यू आर इन माय लाइफ, फादर, लॉर्ड यू आर डी किंग ऑफ़ किंग्स एंड डी लॉर्ड ऑफ़ लॉर्ड ये डॉल्फ फॉर माईग, यू आर डी बिगनिंग एंड लॉर्ड, थैंक यू फॉर गिविंग एन अपॉर्चुरिटी तू वर्षिपिंग डी ट्रू एंड डी लिविंग वन एंड लॉर्ड, थैंक यू, लॉर्ड, फॉर डी वर्ड डेट यू हैव ब्रोट मी डेट यू ब्रोट इन टू मी, इन टू अवर्मेजन इस दिस मॉर्निंग एंड लॉर्ड, आज यू हस स्पोकन, लॉर्ड, यू हैव मेड मी इन योर ओनली इमेज बट लॉर्ड, बिकॉज़ ऑफ़ माय सिंहफुल नेचर, आई बिन अस्ट्रे लॉर्ड, आई वास एक्सट्रीमली सिंहफुल, गोन अवे फ्रॉम योर प्रेजेंस लॉर्ड, अकॉर्डिंग तू माय, लॉर्ड, आई वास इन तू कन्डोमनेशन बट यू आर डी गॉड हुआ सीन मी, हुआ शोन योर लव टुवर्ड्स मी एंड लॉर्ड, यू हैव कॉल मी बाय माय नेम, एंड लॉर्ड, यू, लॉर्ड एंड यू फॉरगेट मी, एंड लॉर्ड, व्हेन आई एक्सेप्टेड यू आज माय पर्सनल सेवियर लॉर्ड, आई यू कम इन डी माय हार्ट एंड यू, यू डेवल इन माय हार्ट, एंड लॉर्ड एंड यू बिन गाइडिंग मी सेंस देन, फादर, लॉर्ड थैंक यू फॉर ऑल योर प्रॉमिसेस, थैंक यू फॉर डी होप डेट यू गिवन मी, डी लॉर्ड डेट आई विल बी इन योर, लॉर्ड, यू मेड मी इन योर लाइकनेस, एंड लॉर्ड एंड लॉर्ड, एंड वन डे आई विल बी इन योर किंगडम, लॉर्ड, विथ यू प्रेजिंग यू एंड वर्षिपिंग यू, एंड लॉर्ड थैंक यू फॉर ऑल डी गुड न्यूज़ डेट यू डॉन इन माय लाइफ एंड लॉर्ड, थैंक यू फॉर डी वे डेट यू आर लीडिंग मी एंड माय फैमिली इन डी डे टू डे टू डी लाइफ, फादर, लॉर्ड लॉर्ड, नथिंग आई कैन गिव यू इन विटन, लॉर्ड, आई हमल मायसेल्फ एंड अप्लाइड दिस कप ऑफ़ सल्वेशन, ऑफर दिस प्रेज एंड वर्षिपिंग इन डी मोस्ट हाईली एक्साल्टेड नेम ऑफ़ लॉर्ड एंड सेवियर जीसस क्रिस्ट
अमन
आई हैव सेंट योर ओनली बिगोटन सन, ओह, लॉर्ड एंड लॉर्ड, लव मी सो मच, ओह, लॉर्ड, विद डायन ग्रेट लव लॉर्ड, इन क्रिस्ट, जीसस, डेट यू हैव सेंट, ओह, लॉर्ड तू सफर बिहाफ ऑफ़ मी, ओह, लॉर्ड दहास लेड माय सिंह, ओह, लॉर्ड, एंड माय ट्रस्पेसेस लॉर्ड, यू हैव मेड योर सन तू बी ब्रूस, ओह, लॉर्ड ओह, लॉर्ड, आई प्रेज एंड, आई प्रेज एंड थैंक यू फॉर योर डेथ बरियल एंड रेसरेक्शन, ओह, लॉर्ड थ्रू विच, ओह, लॉर्ड, यू हैव बॉट मी, ओह, लॉर्ड, विथ योर प्रेशियस ब्लड ओह, लॉर्ड, रीडिंग मी, ओह, लॉर्ड, फ्रॉम डी डार्कनेस तू डी मावलेस लाइट एंड लॉर्ड, एंड ट्रांसलेटेड मी इन डी किंगडम ऑफ़ योर डियर सन, ओह, लॉर्ड लॉर्ड, आई प्रेज एंड थैंक यू, लॉर्ड, फॉर योर रेसरेक्शन अलसो थ्रू विच, ओह, लॉर्ड, यू, यू मेड मी लाइव, ओह, लॉर्ड बिकॉज़ यू लिव, ओह, लॉर्ड, आई हैव, आई अलसो लिव, ओह, लॉर्ड एंड यू क्रिकेट माय स्पिरिट अलसो, लॉर्ड, आई प्रेज एंड थैंक यू
My loving, my loving Father, I come for your presence today. Lord, thank you for being the master of my life, my life. Lord, thank you for giving me another day, my life, Lord. It's only because of your grace and mercy, Lord, that I cannot consume. Your mercies are new, Lord, your compassion, they fail, they fail. Lord, I thank you, praise you. Lord, this Sunday morning, thank you for giving me your word. Worship, worship, spirit, truth, yes, Lord, I was dead, is dead. Oh, Lord, in my sins and trespasses, but you can make me through the spirit of Christ. Lord, I thank you, Lord, Lord, what a rich and generous Lord. Lord, Lord, have you from your presence, Lord, living in your presence. Lord, in the mighty, help it, Lord, but still, oh Lord, you had compassion on me, Lord. It's only because of your abounding love and grace, Lord, 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 that you've bought me into Christ. Lord, I thank you and praise you, Lord. Lord, I praise you, Lord, for what you are, Lord, for what you've done in my life, Lord, and what you are yet to do in my life. Lord, I thank and praise you, Lord. Lord, Lord, thank you for the sufferings, Lord, that you are loved, Lord, since they are the divine principles, Lord, that guide me and shape me, Lord, to become more like you. Lord, I thank and praise you. Oh, Lord, Lord, what, Lord, what am I, Lord, that you're mindful of me, Lord? Lord, what am I, Lord, that you had compassion on me, Lord? What can I render unto thee? Lord, for all thy love, Lord, grace toward me, Lord, I lift up my cup of salvation, Lord, and offer my praise and thanksgiving in the most exalted and matchless name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ.
Amen.
And all these meetings that take place are being, we are being prepared for that great event in our lives. So be with us even through this meditation, we may have a reflection and we may correct our results and set things right with thee and take part in the table of thine worthily, so that we may grow in thy grace. Pray thanksgiving in Jesus' precious name. We have been concerning how we have to walk worthy of God. Coalition's one, ten says, "Walk worthy of the Lord." And Isaiah chapter two, verse five says, "Walk in the light of the Lord." And Ephesians two, four, one says, "Walk worthy of the calling where with thee are called." So, all these things speaks of the whole tenor of life, every facet of our life. The walk, that means there is a progress. So, Christian life is a life of progress. So, that's what we are going to see here further, abound more and more. Antakantaku abhirudi in Telugu, very good expression. So, we are abound more and more in faith and we are to be abound more and more in strength. These two we have seen. To add few more thoughts to the faith. See first concerning the Deseonians, it is written like this. Second Deseonians, chapter one, verse three. "We are bound to thank God always for you brethren, as it is meet, because that your faith grows exceedingly and the chariot of every one of you all toward each other more and more among Deseonian believers." And also he testifies that their faith grows exceedingly. Bah, mi viswashamoh bahuga abhirudi. His faith is abounding more and more. Aan viswashamoh, ami viswashamoh yanto abhirudi bodhichunnavi. That should take place as we get aged. So also, our spiritual also should get more and more experience with the Lord. It is only then we are of some use for the people of God. See first, first Timothy, first Timothy, chapter five, verse twelve. First Timothy, chapter five, verse twelve, there is a disappointing note concerning the believers of, in that place, having damnation because they have cast off their first faith. What was that first faith? Romans ten seventeen. Faith committed by hearing, hearing by the word of God. Because of that faith, by grace they are saved, came to the fellowship positions. But now concerning some of them, it says, "They have cast off their first faith." It is a very disappointing thing. Some people send that faith on extraordinary leave. They have sent it on extraordinary leave, faith they have left it there only. So now they live faithless life. That means they walk by sight, not by faith. Faith has to have a continual effect in our life until we breathe our loss or until the Lord would come again. Faith plays vital role. Without faith, you cannot be believer of the Lord. Trust him for everything. You may have everything, but yet it is a very, you know, unique thing that yet you have to trust him. It is not something to be operated by the whole time of God's servants. Those who have resigned their job to serve, it is not that. Every believer who have got the spirit of God in them, who Lord is enveloping them, it is their birthright to continue to exercise faith. By faith he should live. Brother Bakshin had everything with him, but yet for everything he will pray. For everything he takes permission. Even it is said when he was in England, even for a haircut he would ask the Lord. It is funny, it is one of his books, it is written in his testimony. For having hair cut, he will ask the Lord. Lord said, "No, not now." Then he will keep faith. Then one day he wanted to go, then Lord said, "Go." Then that time, there was nobody, there were no customers in the barber shop. Barber only one person was there. Now he got an opportunity to share the gospel, nobody was there. Otherwise, he finished one customer and takes another customer. Nobody was there, absolutely. He was the only man. Then he had an opportunity to give the couple and he says like this, and he says like this. I have given the gospel, that man was saved and then he had a free haircut. He uses that word. See, it is not the having fear cut, free haircut that matters, it is that man was saved. He had an opportunity because he had all the time to listen to him. You see? So that is why, for everything, you may have everything, you may be karor patis or lakpatis or whatever patis you are. But you should trust him. For everything that you do, you have to ask the Lord. Lord, should I do it? Should I vote it? Should I go? You know, there was one person, so all the ninety percent of believers are teachers. No industry, so there is no other category. And there is no train, so no railway applies. So, all believers are teachers. So, one Emmanuel, he is a elder, is a son of an elder, wonderful believer. Many times he translated for me into Nepali in Kalimpong. That man got a job near Calcutta, some village, you know, someplace. So, what he wanted to know is whether there is a fellowship there for him to grow. Then before he could find, he went there, recked the place, you know, it means it is more than thousand kilometers from Kalimpong to Calcutta. He went there and recked that around anywhere, there is no fellowship at all. He had to travel towards Calcutta for any fellowship. So, he did not accept that job. See? So, the first and foremost thing is that we should think that what type of life that I can live in the given circumstances. The first and foremost thing is faith. Faith will not go by sight, but it will go by faith. You know, if you are a believer of the Lord. Now see Revelation, chapter two, verse four. When you lose faith, you will lose that first love also. Revelation, chapter three, verse four. See, they have lost their first love. When you lose the first love, when you lose the faith, you will lose the first love also. Then what happens? You will lose the first works also. The way that you are behaving before, when you are having full faith and love, then those works also will go. That is why, remember from where you have fallen, come back to that situation, it says. So, we have to have that faith in God. And see, second Deseonians, chapter three, verse two. Second Deseonians, chapter three, verse two. "And we may be delivered from unreasonable and wicked men, for all men have not faith." He is writing to whom? He is writing to Deseonian believers of whom he commended very greatly of their faith and belief. And their faith is increasing more and more. And also we find in first Deseonians, chapter one, verse six. "And he became followers of us and of the Lord, having received the word in much affliction with joy and the Holy Ghost." And verse three, "Remembering without seeking your work of faith and labor of love and patience of hope in the Lord Jesus Christ, in the sight of God and our Father." So, that was the testimony concerning Deseonian believers. Then he says concerning Deseonian believers, he said, "For all men have not faith." So, there is a possibility that in every church, there could be some people who have lost that first faith, lost that first love, lost those first works and they have become normal people. They are of no use in the church at all. So, every one of us should have faith in God. Whether you are a worker or, you know, are you are working or no worker, whatever it is. Whoever you are, you should have that faith in God. It is only then you will grow in the grace of your Lord. You will make steady progress in your spiritual life and thus you would be a blessing for others. Faith is very, very important. By faith you should live. That means what? You will read the word of God, meditate the word of God and you will have that passion, urge to have fellowship with the fellow believers. It is among the believers, you grow in the grace of the Lord. House of God, you will have love, passion, as Lord has said concerning David in Psalm twenty-six, verse eight. "I have loved the habitation of thy house, where thine honor dwellest," he says. And I would like to dwell in the house of the Lord all the days of my life, twenty-three, verse six. And also he says twenty-seven, verse four, "I want to dwell in the house of the Lord and meditate thy word." So, we need to have that passion and urge. How can we have this? It is only when you have continual faith. Initial faith will make you his, but continual faith will keep you his. That means you will still stick to him, still you follow him. So, we should have faith. And second thing we have seen is, from strength to strength you have to go. How can we go from strength to strength? Who can go from strength to strength? Who can ascend into the hill? Psalm twenty-four, we have read. Psalm twenty-four, verse three. "Who shall ascend into the hill of the Lord, or who shall stand in his holy place? He is that hath clean hands and a pure heart, who hath not lifted up his soul unto vanity, nor sown deceitfully." We need to have very clean heart. That means we need to be holy. Not in the sight of people around us, but in the sight of God. God can see you through and through. I love PAreshop. You know PAreshop? P-E-A-R-S, PAreshop. What is the difference from other shops? It is transparent. We should be transparent believers. I love, I use PAreshop because of that only. Transparent, we should be, because I want to be reminded again and again, as this is transparent, you should also be transparent. People should know what is in my heart. Some people, we don't understand what they are. Brother Bakshin had, you know, somebody has donated him half acre of land in Bhopal many years ago. It is registered in the name of brother Bakshin. There was one aarogjam who came to work in BHL and he was looking after the fellowship there. Then he started claiming it is mine. "God has honored my faith. God has seen my work. So, he has given me this land," he says. And then he would come and humble himself, his height he will reduce. And he will like this. He is acting. You know, you don't have ready your height and come, you know, below and as if you are humbling. Then I, third day I told him, "Aarogjam, you are an aarogjam," I said. He laughed. Then I said, "Ativyanayam dhortalekshanam." You understand the Telugu? Ativyanayam dhortalekshanam. One may smile and smile and et be a villain. You know, Shakespeare said in Hamlet, Julius Caesar. One may smile and smile and et be a villain. We are God's people in God's place, under God's rule. We should be saints. Word of God says, "We were sinners. Now God has made us saints by the precious blood of the Lord that is had on the cross of Calvary." So, we need to be clean people. We need to be transparent people. There should not be any hidden agenda. You know, we should be very, very clear, you know, and we should be holy. You know, from strength to, we have seen, as long as Samson maintained that separation, he did exploits beyond human comprehension. We cannot understand naturally such things will not happen, but he could accomplish it. It is a history. Samson is not a, you know, ethic or, you know, some kattukata kalpataka gadu. It is a history. He has learned it. It is because of separation. You should be holy before the Lord. Before we could take part in the table of the Lord, there is very important thing that you would examine, that, "Am I holy? I have been purchased by the blood of the Lord? Have I become really his?" Now, when you belong to him, whatever you have, it is not yours, it is his. So, holy life you should live. There was a time when brother Bakshin was in his room, one God servant said, "Uncle, can I come? I want to see you." Just come in. Then he came in. The moment that man came in, brother Bakshin held his nose. Dirty smell is coming from the socks. Some people have got infect in the snacks and all socks and dirty smell comes. Then brother Bakshin shouted at him, said, "Remove your socks and come." He said, "Then the guy, 'Okay, okay, brother.'" Then he went out. After sometime he came in. Still brother Bakshin was putting his nose. "Hey, did I not ask you to take off the socks?" "Uncle, I have removed sock." Then he said, "Uncle, I have removed my sock." See, I have, I have removed my sock. From where did you remove? Pitwani, he came inside. Still your dirty smell was coming. Like that, there are many believers. When we come around the table of the Lord, we don't really examine ourselves. As the servant of God says, "Those who are ready, put off your hands, high enough to be seen." You don't even wait. Hey, what sort of life that you have lived all this, you know, one week? How did you see? How did you hear? How did you behave? How did you talk? What did you do? Disciples had a wonderful, wonderful practice of reporting to the Lord on the days' marketing, spiritual marketing. Now see, Mars Gospel, chapter six. Mars Gospel, chapter six, verse thirteen. "And the apostles gathered themselves together unto Jesus and told him all things, both what they had done and what they had taught." What they had done and what they have taught, they have told everything to the Lord. Two by two, Lord was sending. When they come, in the evening they would give a marketing, like marketing report. Marketing managers have to report to the general manager daily. Before they go to bed, they have to really, you know, apprise him of what they could achieve and what they have done. So also apostles of old, they have been doing it. That is how we, every believer of the Lord, purchased by the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ, this habit of reporting to the Lord before you could finally sleep. Kneel down by the side of the bed and close your eyes and Lord will show you how you behaved, how you looked at, how you heard and what you have done throughout the day. That is how you can prune yourself, correct yourself and be ready to take part in the table of the Lord worthily on Sunday. But many people, you know, you purchase tawa, you know, roti maranavala tawa. Their first day it is very neat and tidy and then first day it is all right, second week, you know. Then, you know, you normally whoever washes, you know, and slowly upper portion also get, you know, accumulated that, all those things. You know, it cannot go. Now what we do, we accumulate it until the washing aid service. Why don't you do it every day? Because every day God has given you how we are living. That is how we should be very, very careful with your life. God has given this life and he has purchased that body. Through the body you have to live, then how do we live? So, that is why it is very, very important that we should sanctify ourselves by the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ. And again and again, you should come unto the cross and come unto the sprinkling, blood of the Lord Jesus Christ. There is an English song which begins like this, "King of My Life." If you know it afterwards, you can sing yourself, "King of My Life." The chorus, I love it. Wherever I go, I keep uttering these verses. The chorus is, "Lest I forget Gatshemani, lest I forget thine agony, lest I forget thy love for me, lead me to Calvary." "Lest I forget thine..." "Lest I forget..." "Lest I forget thine..." "Lest I forget Gatshemani, lest I forget thine agony, lest I forget thy love for me, lead me to Calvary." You need to be, you ought to be led to the cross of Calvary again and again. You know why? We are still in this corruptible body, living in this corruptible world. The sinful dust keep falling on us, many times unaware. You don't even think that is a lie. Many times, the tongue and the mind does not match at all. Mind says something, tongue says something else. You know, especially that is seen when the mutton curry is served in the congregation. Mutton curry, you know, not here like this, you know, Bhapya time. You know, a lot of Angora people have got this tendency to encourage people to eat. So, mutton is served, first round is over, then second round, rice has been served and mutton valla, he comes. It is a natural thing. I keep watching it happening. That means, mind says something, tongue says something else. Okay, couple from Bangalore, she is a doctor, she had a friend, a doctor friend in London. They went to their house and then lady came and received them and took his wife inside and that man was sitting outside. You know, in the drawing room. Then the lady comes and asks him, "Would you like to have a cup of coffee?" First he is saying, "No." They will not ask you. They would only ask once, "Would you like to have a cup of coffee?" "No, no, no, no." Why did she not wait? He was wondering. He went inside, he was thinking, "I want to have coffee, but this lady has gone inside." Then afterwards, this lady and her friend, you know, his wife, both were cupping, shipping coffee and coming into the drawing room. Then her wife asked him, "Hey, did you not have your coffee?" Then before he could say anything, she said, "I asked him, but he said, 'No.'" And then again she asks him, "Would you like to have coffee now?" "Yes, yes ma'am, I would like to have." These things, instances tell me very clearly, many times, mind and the tongue does not match. But believer, it should not be like this. Should be spared is spared. And I have seen it happening in London recently when I went. When the second serve came, everybody saying, "Yes, sir, sir, I want sir. I want to eat little more." So truthful, people have become truthful. So, throughout the day, this is one instance, there are so many occasions in various situations, we become like unbelievers, as if we are not able to behave. How do we react? How can you be a real believer? I said, "Practice WWJD." What would Jesus do? You practice it in my place, in this situation, if my Lord is there, what would he do? I will also do the same thing. If you adopt this method, I tell you, you will be a different person. I have been practicing in my office also this, when I was manager finance in an international firm. You know, you will be a different person altogether, in every situation. If my Lord is here, what will he do? I will also do the same thing. Even it costs, humiliation, insult, you should bear it because my Lord, he did not open his mouth. Isaiah says in chapter five, fifty-three, verse seven. So, that is the life that we need. When you live that life, then you will be strengthened more and more to be of much use in your house and also in the mandali. Now thirdly, you need to grow in love. In the love, you should, more and more, you should, you should have love for the people of this world. See, first Deseonians, chapter three, verse twelve. We should abound more and more in love. First Deseonian, chapter three, verse twelve says, "And the Lord make you to increase and abound in love, one toward another and toward all men, even as we do toward you." See, Paul himself gives an example, as we loved you, you should also have similar love for others. Our love is always very selective. That is how political groups fall, you know, is formed in the church. Never have selective love. Your love should be distributed evenly to the whole congregation. I have no followers in Delhi, I want to tell you. I don't make any groups. I am for everybody. That is the type of life that I should live. You know, you, Lord has loved you so much. We read in Romans, chapter five, verse five. He shed abroad, shed abroad his love in our lives. He has filled our lives with his love and it is expected of us to distribute love evenly to the congregation, even in the family also, evenly to everyone at home. Lord's love. What is Lord's love? God so loved the world. He did not say specifically, "I love this man so much, this..." No. He loved evenly, loved everyone. The man who is going in the street, love, the man who is in the island, he loves them. So, that is the love of the Lord. So, we should have in that love, we should abound more and more. See, first Deseonians, chapter four, nine and ten. "But as touching, brethren, you love, we need not that I write unto you, for yourselves are taught of God to love one another, and indeed ye do it toward all the brethren which are in all Macedonia. But we beseech you, brethren, that ye increase more and more." In the first verse says, "You have love for one another." It is good, very good, but it is not enough. He says, "You should increase, you increase in that love more and more. You should abound more and more." So, do you have that sort of love of the Lord you are exhibiting towards others in mandali? Then God's name would be glorified. Love should be exhibited, should be practiced, not in words, but in deeds. See first John makes it very clear. First John, chapter three, verse eighteen. First John, chapter three, verse eighteen. "My little children, let us not love in word, neither in tongue, but in deed, in truth." See? Immediately you may say, "I love you, I love you, I love you." That love should be manifested. I have seen once, I was passing through a school to children, small children, they were talking among them. One little children was saying, "Hey, hold my bag, I will just come." He said, "Na baba na." That girl says, "No baba." You should practice that love. You saying, "I love you, but you don't, you want to carry my bag." I was wondering, then I remembered this word. What is that? Three eighteen. "My little children, let us not love in word, neither in tongue, but in deed and in truth." Practical love we should show. Now see four twenty. John's Gospel, chapter four, verse twenty says, "If a man say, 'I love God,' and hated his brother, he is a liar; for he that loveth not his brother whom he hath seen, how can he love God whom he hath not seen?" Very important verse. So, we need to have a love evenly distributed among people of God. Otherwise, groupism will take place. You know, I invite him, he invites me. I cook chicken for him, he cook chicken for me. A group. And another person also like that. There is a very bad thing happen. You know, that is very, very bad. You should have evenly distribute your love and no political system should be developed. In Delhi, we were five, six elders. Brother Bakshin had set up at us in nineteen eighty-one. One day, suddenly one brother took me outside when we were praying together. One of us, you know, he is one among us, he took me outside at the door and he asked me, "JC." They call me JC. My name has been cut short to initials. "JC, whatever happens in our elders meeting, whenever I suggest something, you support me. Whenever you say something, I will support you." "I got fucked." "Hey, his name is Vijay Williams, he is now with the Lord." I held his cheeks and said, "Hey, this is a political situation you are telling. I am not for it," I said. "No, I will never do this." We should pray together and decide. There is a lot of people are like that. You know, they bring in the Christian circles, inner circle, political system. You know, supporting, "I support you, you support me." That is not a spiritual thing. You should pray together until there is oneness among God's people. There is brotherly love. In Johasama it happened, one day brother Bakshin suggested, "Let us do some part work in Johasama compound." One brother said, "Brother, concerning this, I have no peace." Then he did not say, "Majority agrees with me." He never did that. He said, "Let us pray." The day, it is a history in Johasama, up to nine thirty in the night, he prayed with them. Again and again, several rounds of prayer. In that prayer, they never prayed for him. They never prayed for him, "Lord, we have peace. He does not have peace. Oh, Lord, convict him, break him." They did not say that. They were only praying this, "Oh, Lord, if it is in the, I will let it come to pass. This is our burden." So, prayed for that situation, they prayed. Several rounds they prayed. Finally, that brother said, "Brother, I have no peace. Let us go ahead." That is the life that he lived. That is why, word of God spread like wildfire in Andhra Pradesh. People wandering, all the revelers, I just imagine like this, entire world is looking in Andhra Pradesh. Can you picture? Any artist, he can draw that picture. Entire world, revelers, they were watching what is happening in Andhra Pradesh. It is because, tissue paper new name. It is because that they have no... So, you should have oneness. So, we should have oneness. For that, we have to be bound by the love of the Lord Jesus Christ. There should be full agreement. Somebody said once, "Okay, brother, we are not able to agree. Let us agree to disagree." That way, we cannot work together in the house of God. Everyone should have peace. All should say the same thing. Where do we find that? 1 Corinthians, chapter 1, verse 10. That all, all of you may say the same thing, that is the word I want to refer. All of you may say the same thing. We have to come to that sort of agreement. Where the spirit of God works evenly in everyone's heart. There is no difference of opinion whatsoever. That is how you can enjoy more love, more strength and more faith also. We have to have that sort of situation. And then fourthly, we find, you should increase in height, atmeanga yedugudara. You know, you should grow higher and higher. You know, there is a bird that we have in Psalm 92. Psalm 92, verse 12. It is only when go higher and higher, you have the wonderful glimpses of the Lord, glory of the Lord. 13. See, they will flourish in the courts of our God. The righteous shall flourish like the palm tree. He shall grow like a shador in Lebanon. Concerning shador, it says, somebody bottom it said, it grows one inch up and two inches it grows into the earth. That is why it is very strong, let the, in it, storm, any tempest, these shadars will stand erect. Because the earth, that is foundation is very strong. Word of God says in Colossians, chapter 3, verse 16. Let the word of God rest in you richly. Let the word of God rest in you richly. We need to receive the word of God and keep it. When my wife was caught to glory in a train accident in 1989, it is the word of God that sustained me. It is the word of God strengthened me to follow the Lord Jesus Christ, continue to look unto me and I and my five children. We were not perturbed, not distracted. We have to face the problems that we face. That happens when you grow higher and higher in the Lord. When you have the word of God, word of God, as you are God. See 2 Corinthians, 2 Corinthians, chapter 4, 8 and 9. We pass through this situation. We are troubled on every side, yet not distressed. We are perplexed, but not in despair. Persecuted, but not forsaken. Cast down, but not destroyed. What a bird it is. That is the type of life that we should live. Come what may, come what may, whatever trial and tribulation, suffering that I may face, but yet, O Lord, I will not leave you. Stone after stone was falling on Stephen. They dragged him out of the city and thrown him to death. They remove extra clothes so that they may have power to throw. They did not shower flowers on him. You know, they threw stone with all might. Imagine that a man is getting hit. You know, how he would have succumbed to the throw, you know, that blood was coming all over the body. And yet, he did not deny Christ. If you have got life, you can at least live, sell salt and live. And then there is the last thing. But Stephen gave his life. He was the first martyr. And that is why it became more and more, more and more, the ministry increased. More and more gospel was preached. You know, one great politician in India said, I think it was Valavai Patel, don't trouble Christians. If you trouble them, they will multiply, he said. There is a history. Persecution, what persecution we faced in the first century. We were not there. Now we are in 21st century, 23rd century. What century it is? Huh? 24th century, huh? What? Twenty, huh? 21st century we are in. Now first century, think of it. Ah, 20 centuries before, there was so much of persecution. People were thrown into the lines in front of the children. In front of the parents, children were thrown. They were put in the hollow of the tree and cut the tree with, you know, saw. That is what I have put in my song. That is how I was challenged before I could design my job and serve the Lord. Same thing, I have put it in my song. Earlier, when I composed it, I said, that is how I composed it. When I started singing in the mandali, I said, you would be more emphatic than I. Then I changed it. And that is the song that we have. So in the midst of lot of conflicts in life, God calls you, then obey him, then God's name would be glorified. It has happened to me. God's name is highly exalted and be glorified when you obey. Even in the midst of terrible, tight corners, when you are caught in, when you think, where is the point of escape, how can I go away? At that time, God calls you, accept it and serve the Lord. So you, when you walk by faith, when you don't walk by sight, you face many problems in this world. This 8th and 9th verse, let us all read together. We are troubled on every side, yet not distressed. We are perplexed, but not in despair. Persecuted, but not forsaken. Cast down, but not destroyed. See, we have problems all the while, but in the midst of those troubles, you know, you come out as a winner, victor. When you are pressed too hard, I want to tell you, when you are pressed through various circumstances and situations too hard, that is the time, a real Christian character should emerge out of it. People should see Lord Jesus Christ. That is what happened in the first century. That is why these are those who have turned the world upside down, or the testimony concerning them. So as you grow higher and higher, more problems will come. As you bear the sufferings, the intensity of the suffering will increase more and more. You know how? I will explain. When I was in Karpa, near Simhaduparam, my brother and his friends took me to, you know, teach me swimming. There are no chedhulu, no baolu, you know, bay, you know, very, you know, like in this Sarab. So big well and so deep well, they took me there. And there are stone steps were there, we went down. And they tied three wooden locks, you know, Munaga bend, you know, Munaga said to, you know, that tree, drumsticks, drumsticks tree is very light. Dried up locks, they tie on your back. They tied on my back and threw me in the water. Hey, I said, but I was floating. I enjoyed that throw. And I was floating. And they said, move your hands and kick your hands and legs. Then I was doing, I was floating in the water. I enjoyed it. And they finished all the swimming, they said, I am not coming. It was like that, I enjoyed. Then second day, they took me again, come on, let us go today also. Then second day, what happened? They pretended that they are tying the Munaga glue, but they threw me, like, just like that. Then I remembered how increases, Lord increases the intensity of our suffering. But yet, his grace is sufficient for us in every situation. His grace is sufficient, but you have to yield ourselves unto him. Then God will do much more than what he has done. What we have read in Psalm 92? We are like shadars as we grow in the Lord Jesus Christ. We go higher and higher. We have to go higher and higher in our spiritual life. It is only there, God will open up your heart. When Moses ascended, as we read in Exodus, chapter 34, we read there, God descended. When he ascended, God descended and stayed with him. That is a wonderful thing. We have to ascend, but we want to be at the foot of the hill and see others going, hey, see, brother Baxing, where he has gone? See, see, Billy Graham, see, that man, this man. But you remain to be in the foot of the hill, who will go onto the mountain? That is what Lot said to the angel when they were being delivered from the, you know, Sodom. He said, angel said, 19th verse, 19th chapter, wind in Genesis, escape to the mountain. Then what did Lot say? No, I cannot escape to the mountain, I go to the plain, he said. That is what we are seeing practically, many believers' life. They tend to be at the foot of the hill or the plain and they don't want to climb higher and higher. You have to go higher and higher to have the glimpses of the glory of God. You have to make an effort. If you put the first step, he will enable you to put the second step. That means the step of faith. Then God will make you a great blessing in the assembly. You know, when I was in NCC, I remember one experience, I linked it with my spiritual life also. I was a good shooter, she said to get holder, they took me along with other NCC cadets. In Karnul, there is a place called Jagannath Ghat. Very big mountain. It is between Jharna Chalam and Karnul, very big mountain. So there, we were to fire the shots against the mountain. So before we could start firing, we have to install red flags all around that area, range. And then one carriage has to go onto the top of the mountain, very top. There you have to install one flag. I was, every time I was avoiding, I would not look into eyes of the captain lest he calls me. I was avoiding. One day, he called me by name, Jayachandarav, come. You have to go up today. Then he gave me the flag. Then, you know, you have to go. Then I went with all the uniform and then haversack and rifle, ankle boot. With all that, midsummer, you know, you climb. There is no way, you have to make a way, the tiny bushes and boulders. So I made a way because there is a commandment behind me. I was forced. And then I went up and up and up and up. After 20 minutes, I went on the top of the mountain. I installed the flag and then wiped out my sweat and looked around. What a spectacular sight of Karnul. Whole of Karnul city was at my glance, one glance. And then I saw the river, Tsuguvada river flowing on the other side. And I could see that Konradu Burzu in the center of the city. A very famous place, Konradu Burzu. So all those things I could see at a glance. Then I regretted, I wish I had come every time here. That is how many times we miss the glory of God. Because you don't want to make an effort to go higher and higher. I want to tell you, on the authority of the word of God. In Exodus, chapter 19 onwards, whenever God wanted to reveal his heart unto Moses, he always called him, come onto the mount. Come onto the mount. It is a symbolic representation to tell us, if you want to know him more and more, you have to climb the mountain. First of all, where did God reveal himself to Moses? In the very first place. In some valley or in plain, on Mount Horeb. He saw that burning bush. But there is a wonderful meditation, now we are going to touch, not going to touch. There, God spoke to me, I am God of Abraham, God of Isaac, God of Jacob, a mountainous experience. We need to have that mountainous experience. That means going higher and higher in our spiritual life. That means we should be drawn closer and closer unto him through the meditation of the word of God. It is only through the word of God, you can be kept closer and closer unto him, where God will open up his heart for you. It is only then you have a heavenly experience. That is what brother Baxing had. He is a great example, a lively example. After some centuries from now on, they would not even know who is brother Baxing. As we talk about Sadhusundar Singh, oh, we don't know much about him. Like that, people may talk about it. That is why there are lot of books concerning brother Baxing. One must read that. Do not skip, you have to read brother Baxing's Life on Daydreaming. How he lived his life and how he, he, his main forte is faith in God. You know, faith. So that is how he served the Lord and great things have happened through him. He got the promise and God has fulfilled his promises. So higher level of spiritual experience, we must have. And then see furthermore, with that, we will close. 2 Corinthians, chapter 4 again. 2 Corinthians, chapter 4. Verse 16 and 17. See, Paul often refers to the spiritual man into inward man, inner man and then hidden man. You know, like that, he talks about. The inner man is growing in the Lord. The outer man may perish. That means you may be hit tsunami after tsunami. So many problems are there. You are being hit from all sides, at home, in the office, in the church, everywhere in the world. But in the midst of all these, the inner man will be renewed more and more, strengthened more and more to live for him. And a wonderful example is Paul himself. 11th chapter of 2 Corinthians, he lists out towards the end of the chapter, what all the problems that he faced. In the midst of all this, he faced them, he received them, he enjoyed them. That is why he says, I can do all these things through Christ who strengthens me. Whatever may be the situation, I will still trust him. Because he is going to come again. When he would come again, when I look at him as he is, then I will be transformed into my, into life, in his very image. We shall be like him, the word of God says. And then next verse says, see next verse. If we have to be shining forth in our inward man, what we should be doing is, 1 John, chapter 3, verse 3. Second verse is very great, encouraging, we shall be like him. Then third verse says, and every man that hath this hope in him, purifies himself even as he is pure. This cannot be neglected, this cannot be ignored. You may have this great expectation that you shall be like him. What you should do? Here it says, purifies himself as even he is pure. Word of God says, be holy, for I am holy. It is as simple as that. You have to come in, you attain to that situation where you are holy in the presence of the Lord. Then by obedience only, you can be in that situation. Then God's name would be glorified. He is going to come again. When he would come again, we should be found faithful in his sight. We should not be caught unawares. You know, suddenly, you know, he would come, then what you would be doing? If you are caught unawares, you may love him, but you may not be love his appearing. Word of God says, not only you love him, you should also love his appearing. 2 Timothy 4:8, it says. There was a mother who made nice, very nice ladus she made and gave to his son and she enjoyed it. And then mother tells him, beta, don't touch it, I know when to give you. Don't touch it. She kept all the ladus in a dhabba, kept it on the almera top. And then sometimes she went to the market. Then this boy thought, I got an opportunity now. I want to eat more ladus. Then he brought one stool near the almera. And then he got onto the, you know, stool and took out the dhabba. And he took out one ladu. You know, dhabba is in his hand, ladu is there, now he looking at her. How he would have looked at her? He, this boy loves his mother very much, his mother, because she takes care of him. But she does not love his appearing now. See. 2 Timothy, 2 Timothy, chapter 4, verse 8. See, love his appearing. You will love him. That we love him is expressed in various ways, in our prayer, in our worship, in our singing. But do you really love him? If you love him, your situation would be different. You should also love his appearing when he would come. This boy loved his mother, but he did not love her appearing at that time. He was caught unawares. Somebody said in 16th century, I look for the church. I find it in the world. Somebody said in sixteenth century, I look for the church, I find it in the world. Very sad thing. I look, when I look for the church, I find it in the world. When I look for the world, I find it in the church. I am confused, he said, one great preacher in sixteenth century, he wrote in his book. That is the situation now, there is lot of worldlyness trapped unawares into the heart, in men and women. We imitate the world, let the world imitate you. Why you imitate the world? You have been chosen out of the world. John's Gospel, fifteen verse, nineteen. Why do you imitate the world? That is the very saddest thing. Once I was in Hebron, one young girl, she came to me in the door, he said, uncle, can I come? I want you to pray for me. I said, yes, Papa, come. As she was coming, she was wearing a skirt to a very higher level and she was pulling it down. She was feeling shy to come to me with that skirt. As she was pulling down, I noticed, I said, Papa. It is very short skirt, it will not come. But she was pulling it, I said. Uncle, I don't want to wear it, uncle, but my mother forces me to wear and says, my daughter should be modern in this world. See, that is how many parents spoil their children. I want you should be modern, karke, they are making modern girls, that means they are making worldly girls, worldly people. Very bad, very bad, never do that. You don't have to imitate the world, why, why do we dress like that? Why do you behave like that? Why do you talk like this? Nowadays, we don't have any time, you know. Earlier, they used to say, hey, if anything, you know, just a minute, please. And you put water, hey, one sec. You Jehova Shama, earlier, we used to call with full name, Jehova Shama, means God is there, you know, the Lord is there. Now you go to Metas, where are you going? They are going JS, they will say. There is no time to pronounce the full name. Jattas, they say. Jattas means you will go to hell. So maintain spiritual life wherever you are, whatever you are. Just because you are in London or America or, you know, Australia, Melbourne and Sydney, you don't have to adopt the local methods. You have to live a life of separation. You have to make a draw, line of demarcation from the worldly people. Then only when the Lord would come again, you will be found faithful in the sight of God, not by imitating the world. That is the message. It is only then you walk worthy of God. Shall we pray? May God enable us to examine ourselves before we take part in the table of the Lord. First Corinthians, chapter eleven, verse twenty-eight says, let a man examine himself, so let him eat on the